Good evening and welcome to the Norfolk Board of Selectmen's meeting of, what is the date?
September 11th.
September 11th.
Oh, goodness, how could I forget that? September 11th. My name is Jim Lehan, to my left is Kevin Calcutt. We do expect Mr. Palumbo shortly. Mr. Hathaway, our town administrator, is here. We have a number of other folks. But before I ask you to introduce your boards, I want to remind everybody at home that this is being both audio and videotaped and is available on NCTV cable. I would ask you all if you'd stand and join us in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, the purpose of the meeting tonight is to welcome our new superintendent, Paul. Welcome, nice to have you with us.
Thank you so much.
And to sort of recap, I think, the general conversations that we started last year in terms of the budgeting process. But if I could ask everyone at the table to introduce themselves, and we'll go around the table and welcome to everybody. Great to have you all here. Yes, Jim?
I think we have to open our respective meetings too.
Do you? Okay, please feel free.
So, seeing that the Plainville Board of Selectmen has a quorum, I will move to officially open our meeting of Tuesday, September 11th, 2018, at 7:07 PM.
I'm sorry, I'm going to have to use the microphone. Please pass the microphone, it's on the table.
Or turn that one to you, there you go.
I'll just do that again. On behalf of the Plainville Board of Selectmen, seeing as how we have a quorum, I will move to officially open our meeting of Tuesday, September 11th, 2018, at 7:07 PM.
Okay, great. So, Kevin, I think we're good, so, Paul?
Do you need?
Why don't we start with you and go right around the table?
You've already opened.
Oh, you don't have a quorum, I believe.
We do, but we've opened it already.
Terrific, great.
Very good. Well then, good evening, everyone.
Introduce everybody around the table.
My name is Paul Zinni, and I am the new superintendent for King Philip.
Matt Kavanaugh, currently the chair of the Plainville Board of Selectmen.
George Sutherland, Plainville Board of Selectmen.
Jim Thompson, I'm the town administrator in Plainville.
Jeff Johnson, Plainville Board of Selectmen.
Jerry McGovern, I'm on the Rentham Board of Selectmen.
Jerry, how are you?
Joe Botash, Rentham Board of Selectmen.
Jimmy Anderson, Rentham Board of Selectmen.
Evening, Kevin Sweet, Rentham Town Administrator.
Jack Hathaway, Norfolk's Town Administrator.
Jim Lehan, Norfolk Board of Selectmen, might as well keep going.
Kevin Calcutt, Norfolk Board of Selectmen.
So, Paul, let me turn it over to you and let you start, maybe. Lucky you.
Sure. Well, I wasn't sure, I didn't prepare an opening statement or anything, but I mean, my understanding was this was an evening to just have a chance to meet all of you and to say hello and for all of you to have a chance to meet me as the new person over at King Philip. I've been on the job for, I think, now two and a half months, and it really has been a pleasure. I have to tell you that the King Philip community has been incredibly warm and welcoming, and everywhere I turn, people are saying their hellos, wishing me well, and looking for ways that they can help to try to make King Philip the best educational experience for kids that they possibly can. And I would say to all of you, you have an incredible amount to be very, very proud of. The King Philip School District is an exceptional school. Your students are outperforming the state, you have more activities and sports opportunities than any high school in the area that I've been familiar with. And so whether it's an activity, or a sport, or music, or art, the academics, whatever students are interested in, they have the opportunity to pursue it in King Philip and to do at an exceptional level. And so you should all be incredibly proud for that, and from my perspective, you should all be thanked for that, because the only way that we can do that, the only way we can offer an education like that is through the support of all three communities, and clearly, although sometimes it's difficult budget-wise, you've all come through, and so personally, I thank you for that.
Jerry, if I could ask you to kind of jump in and share a little bit about what you initiated last year.
Okay, thanks. Going back to the year before last year, we had probably the most challenging year we've had budget-wise. Every year is a tremendous challenge, it's just the nature of the beast in a way. But two years ago was...
Jerry, maybe grab that hand mic, it's for the cable, not for anybody here.
Two years ago was probably without doubt, I think everybody would agree, the most significant challenge we had. So, we did things a little bit differently than the towns did, starting last fall, which I very much would like to see us continue to do, and that was when we got engaged much earlier in the process. Typically, we did not get engaged as towns until the public hearing, the KP School Committee held, usually in the February/March timeframe, where the budget was presented, and then they would make the rounds with the town finance committees and the town Board of Selectmen.
Sure.
So, based on what happened two springs ago, we started things in September. The towns got together first, we went through a series of two or three meetings. The first meeting was just to kind of set the stage for how we would like to attack things from our perspective in regards to getting involved early in the process. The second meeting we had, when we came back, and we shared with each of ourselves, the towns, specific numbers of where we thought were target numbers for us for our assessments. And that's not a real hard number to figure out, it's usually around 3% of whatever our assessment was the year before. And the third meeting was, we shared that with KP, we invited the superintendent and the school committee and the finance director, and we shared it with them. From that, I think we intended to have another meeting prior to the public hearing in February/March, or whatever it was. That didn't occur, we actually had the next meeting at the public hearing. I think that, we haven't really spoke about this, but I'm pretty sure the three towns would agree, I think we'd like to do that again, we'd like to do something where we meet as three towns in October timeframe, kind of see where we're at and what our numbers mean, and then to come back and talk with KP in the November timeframe. One of the things that was also very beneficial that we did in that second meeting, or now the first meeting with KP, was to learn where you were at in execution. Because what happens is, we go through this big, to answer the three towns, some of us call it, in the springtime with the budgets, and then we all have meetings within a couple weeks of each other, the budgets get passed, and then we go off on the summer vacation, and your budget doesn't really get finalized until after the state numbers come in, so we're talking about August, and I believe we probably have an assessment sheet that reflects that, that's probably dated, assuming that what the normal circumstances are in August. So, we don't know, we hadn't known before, we hadn't asked these questions before, what really actually happened in execution? Once you started getting into the budget, what are the things that you actually spent the money on, or preparing to do that, based on all the changes that happened again, or happened before that? So, I think we'd like to probably do the same thing again, have a meeting amongst ourselves in September timeframe, excuse me, October timeframe, meet with you in November. I think that one of the lessons learned from last year would be very, very beneficial for us if we met again as a small group prior to the public hearing, so we have a more clear look over that 85% solution might be, so we can fine-tune things there. It gets a little difficult to actually do that at the public hearing.
Sure.
Anyone else want to add to that?
Jerry's exactly right. So, yeah.
The meetings that we held were non-quorum meetings, we had recently, we had one representative from each board, and so they were working sessions, and then the public meetings were with the school committee, and that dialogue was public, but our working sessions were non-quorum meetings.
I think that's absolutely terrific. I think it's great when we're working on this process together and working on it throughout the whole year. I'm committed to be as available as you need me to be, as often as possible, I'd really like to be a face that the community knows. You know, you're just meeting me now, but as the year goes on, as often as you would like or need me to be at your meetings, if there's any way that I can represent the schools, I'm happy to do that. And so, whatever meetings you'd like to hold to work through this process together, I'm very happy to do. And I know that Mr. Azar, our business manager, is equally committed to making sure that the budget's a transparent process and that people are very comfortable with it by the time we get to the point of voting on it.
Okay. Any other comments?
I just would, you know, I think the reason why we came to that is there was a kind of a lack of trust with KP and the towns. And I think the thing we got through last year is, we've come together and kind of said, okay, we've made some changes, KP's made some positive changes, and the trust factor we're trying to build. I think instead of it being, I took it sort of an us and them last year, it should be a we this year, it should be a collective helping. I, as a selectman, shouldn't be telling you how to create your budget, that's what you get paid to do. It's our job to tell us, you know, to tell you, this is, you know, what we're looking to invest, because we're not spending, we're investing. We're investing in the youth, we're investing in the children at KP, and how can we get there? And you need to tell us what the tools you need, and we have to work together to try to get as close as possible, if not meet. You know, everyone says, we can't afford the budget at KP. Well, technically, the towns can, but they, like I always say, KP is seven through 12 grades, but we have people from ages zero to 105 that we have to think of providing all the services. So, we just want, we want you to fight for what you need, but understand that we have to fill that whole gamut and not just centralize. You know, we even have K through six we have to worry about, and so we want everyone to be treated fairly, and I'd like this year to be more of a we, and not a put you under the microscope, you know, and all that. It happens every year, you know, I think Jerry and I had breakfast one time with one of the members of the KP School Committee, and I said, my biggest aggravation is, here's what we need, if we don't get this, we're going to cut all these people, we're going to do all these cuts. We don't give them what they ask for, we give them what we can, we want to offer, and nothing happens. And that's what we want, I want to get rid of that. I want to be able to sit and say, when I get your budget, I feel comfortable with it, it's easy to understand, this level of service for our students are there, all the programs that go with it, because it's not just the education, it's the social programs that go with it, it's the sports, it's everything. We want to have that full package so that the KP student, the Rentham Elementary, the Plainville Elementary, the Norfolk Elementary, are getting the best education they can. At the same time, we want to make sure that our police and fire and everybody else are providing the services to our people too. So, we just need to work collectively to get there.
I couldn't agree with you more. All of those departments work together. We can't provide a quality education for our students if they're not safe. We need the police department to be strong, to work with us, to keep our students safe. In the same way, you can't have a town that's well-run and safe when you don't have educated people in it. So, you need the children to get a good quality education. When you have a quality education system that we know attracts people to your communities, which generates tax revenue, and all of it works together, we have to be working as a team. And one of the things that you talked, I heard you mention was fight for the budget. I don't want to ever fight for a budget, what I'd like to do for you is educate you on what the budget means for the community and your children, because they're all your children that I'm responsible for helping to provide a high-quality education for. And so it's my responsibility to tell you what your dollars purchase as far as that education goes, and how it would best be spent. And I think it is interesting, school systems are notorious, not just King Philip, of talking about what the budget covers and what happens when the budget doesn't come in where it needs to be. And we talk about the cuts that could ensue, but we're human service providers, and so we went into the field of education because we wanted to better children, we wanted to make a difference, and so we get in there and we do feel the cuts, but we work desperately to try to figure out ways, when the budget doesn't come in, to try to mitigate those concerns, and so what then comes back, it looks like we cried wolf, where in fact, we found ways where we are hurting in the budget because we didn't get the funds we needed, but we found ways where the average child or the average parent wouldn't see it because we didn't want the child to be hurt. But there are a lot of ways that the budget is not intact, and we're not giving the maximum education. But you're right, what we need to be talking about is, this is what we need to do the job properly, and this is what, you know, it could be, but those need to be realistic and legitimate cuts, and if that happens, then it happens. We're not going to play the cry wolf, and it needs to be transparent, you need to be very comfortable with that. The other thing I would emphasize too is that you have one education. Our children start school at preschool, they end at grade 12, and what you'll never see from me anyway, is a competition between school systems. When you build a house, you need a very strong foundation to build the house on, and that's what each of your communities provide at the elementary level, they provide that strong foundation. And when that foundation is built, and it's our job to build the rest of the house to put the walls and the roof on, well, when the foundation is already solid, it makes that job a lot easier, and then the finished product is one that we're all proud of, and that's the goal for everybody. One education from preschool through grade 12. And I had the privilege today of yet again, meeting with all three of your elementary superintendents as well. They work very well as a team, they've welcomed me, and I believe that that's what we're going to be doing as we move forward, working as a collective group to make sure that every child, regardless of where their address is, gets the best education from preschool through grade 12, and that you're comfortable with how that money is spent.
I think, just another way of saying what Joe said, Jim and I have talked about this many times, is when there's a, you know, you go through, we go through the budget process, and there are issues with the budget. You're not funded the way, you know, the KP is not funded the way you're funded, and this applies to the other departments as well, but when you say you're going to make some cuts, and then, as you say, you come up with an alternative, it'd be great if we finished the process and you communicated that back to us, and you know, so if we were going to lay off 15 teachers at level, and that's the level you were funded at, and then you only have to lay off five, which is all good news, if you communicate that back to us, that would, I think that would make us all, you know, we're happy that you only had to lay off five, but let's figure out why it didn't have to be as bad as it was.
I think that's an excellent point, Jack, and I'll tell you, two years ago, when you talk about that very difficult budget, there were layoffs. There were layoffs in both buildings, and we're not back to that same level of staffing. That said, what it meant is, you have higher class size numbers. So, no student is missing math. So, you don't necessarily see it from the home front where, oh my gosh, they said they were going to lay off teachers, and now we don't have math, or we don't have biology. We've got all the subjects going on, but you're looking at some really high class sizes. And, you know, my last assignment, I was in Avon for 17 years, and I will tell you that because they were a choice district, they had to cap their class size numbers, so then we would know how many slots we had available. We capped at 22. You've got classes that are into the 30s in some of your classrooms, that's really high. I mean, when you think about the amount of time that a teacher needs to spend working with each student to make sure that they're on task, that they're learning what they need to do, to check in with them, to make sure they grasp the concept that was just introduced to them, well, when you add a third more students to what the district I left, that, and you still only have a 45-minute block of time for mathematics, that doesn't leave a lot of time per student for that kind of attention. And that's where, it's a subtlety that happens for the education, but when you're out in the public, people didn't see, well, we no longer can offer mathematics, so therefore we, you know, we made a mistake by funding. So, the issues are there, they just are not, you know, there's no spotlight shined on them, we just, we got the budget, we move forward, we make the cuts we need to make, we open the school up, and we move forward, and you're right, the community doesn't see that we went from 27 to 34 students in that biology class. And when you're trying to do labs, and you're trying to keep kids safe, we'd rather have 27 than 34.
You know, and that's something that people don't realize, for me, Jim, and I think for Kevin and Jerry, well, if you grew up in Massachusetts, we grew up in the Prop 2.5 era, where, you know, I went to Boston Public Schools, and Prop 2.5 came in, I think it was 1980, and all the cuts came in, and we had 35, 40 kids in a class, and you said, ah, so what, we got through it, but the education that you see these kids getting today, to what was happening in the early 80s, late 70s, has drastically changed. You know, it's those ones that succeeded are the ones that their parents pulled out and put private or did different things. You didn't see the successes in private school in the inner city that you're seeing at KP. So, when you say that the class size is up to 34, and it should be 25, I think what we need to get to, not just us, but to the citizens of the towns, is educate what the difference is. The, you know, biology, 1980, biology, 2018, totally different.
Exactly.
And I don't think that's something that people are comprehending, because I hear it a lot from the seniors, is that, hey, there was 30 kids in my class, but it was different, it was totally different.
And here's the other double-edged sword, you're doing well. So therefore, if you're doing well, and we say that we had to cut some people, then people would then say, well, but you're making it work, and look, our kids are still performing, so I guess it must be okay. Well, it's not optimal. And I do want to put a plug in, because I think it's important for our communities in, because it's televised, you know, I'm going to put my little pitch in here, and I think you're going to hear me use these phrases ad nauseam, but you are, your kids are getting a world-class education. And I think everybody needs to be celebrating that fact. This country measures its growth by a couple of national assessments, and one being the National Assessment of Education Progress, the NAEP. It's given every two years. For the last two decades, every time the NAEP has been given, Massachusetts has outperformed the country. Massachusetts comes in number one, it's given in grade four, and in grade eight, and sometimes at the high school level, and it's given in ELA, you know, English Language Arts, and it's given in mathematics. In each subject at every grade level, Massachusetts is outperforming the country. Now, take that even further, you hear some of the assessments, the international tests that are given, and you hear about how our country is slipping further down, and we should be concerned about that, that's true. But Massachusetts has actually spent a little bit of extra money, and when they did, they used that money to have their scores disaggregated, as if we were our own country. So, Massachusetts scores are figured into the national score, but then they're also pulled out and looked at, if Massachusetts were its own country, how would we be performing? We came in number two in literacy in the world, we came in number two in mathematics, and I think number five in science. Now, those scores change as they move forward, you know, as we give the test, but we're performing in the top of the world in all of those areas. And so it, you know, it doesn't take a KP graduate to do this mathematics at this point, we can do the math, and say, if Massachusetts is outperforming the country, and it's outperforming the world, how's KP doing? Your scores are dramatically higher than the state average. In each grade we test for MCAS, I just looked at the 2017 scores, 2018, we're waiting, they're coming out any day at the preliminary, there'll be another few weeks before they're released, and I'll share them with you once they are, obviously, but at every grade, in every subject we test, math, science, ELA, you are not just close to the state average, you are dramatically outperforming the state average. And you're doing it, in many cases, with less resources than the other top-performing communities in the state. Now, there's only so much we can do if our funds continue to get cut, but we're going to do the best we can to make sure we maintain that highest quality possible. And that's just the academic piece of it, you know, factor in all of the things that make a good citizen, from community service to the, you know, their interests outside of school, all of that plays a factor in the kind of young men and women that you graduate from high school. And you're graduating some exceptional kids who are going on to do really exceptional things. And so it's my job to let you know what we need to continue to do that, and then it's your difficult job to figure out with the funds that you get, how you make sure that not just the school department, but all the departments you need to, you know, work with, are adequately funded to do the jobs they need to do. But I mean, again, world-class education, that's something we should be talking about everywhere, any place you go in the tri-towns, we should be talking about the kind of education our kids get. And I don't hear that good news story told nearly enough. And so I'm hoping that at the very minimum, we can change that, so when people do come to the town to support a budget, they're coming because they're proud of the education that we're offering, and they want to see it continue.
I think, to kind of dovetail what Joe said about trust, two years ago, sorry, two years ago, we got into a situation where, as you said, you had a very tough budget situation. Budget situations for all three towns are fluid. There are some years that, you know, one town is doing okay, and other years that you're not, and that dynamic changes consistently, okay? You know, if you've been around long enough, you know this, you've ridden through it. I think, from my perspective, having gone through this now, cooperation is key, but cooperation extends down, as you referenced, to all three member communities that go in. I think that what we witnessed over the last few years is a lack of what I'll call detailed quantitative analysis to look what your feeders were sending you. They seem to get caught by surprise on a number of different things, whether it be special education, you know, in that, look at the enrollment numbers, there was no forward planning, it says, okay, I've got X amount of people coming in from my, you know, from all three towns, what are the dynamics of that? You know, where's my, where are my expenses coming? Where additional service, especially in the special education environment, where you have students that need to have these extra services? So, looking at those things, it was not until we pressed harder that we got a little bit more detail. The other thing is the transparency of it all. I think that last year, with Larry's help, I think that transparency got a little bit better. It was very frustrating for us, particularly two and three years ago, to get a straight answer on anything, from not only the business manager, but from your predecessor. I know that what I would like to see is that the process be transparent, that you are open to creative alternatives to some things, okay? I think that the almost knee-jerk reaction has been, well, we're going to, to get to where we want to be, we're going to propose cuts that we know everybody's going to hate, but that's going to bring people to the, that's going to bring people to the town meeting that's going to get what we want. That's not the answer. The answer is the cooperative that says, okay, how do we make this work? But understand that if we tell you that there's a, that there's a figure that we really can't go past because, you know, we have to go back, and as we, all three of us constantly say, we represent the 9,000, not a particular interest group, 9,000 people, residents of the town, that's our responsibility. And as the, you know, as the members of the board, we feel strongly about that, I want to support a quality education in the region, but at the same time, this is a cooperative. And I think that we have to recognize that, you know, we have to be out there, particularly at the operational level, seeking efficiencies when they happen. And the other side to that is, from the education side, is that to do a review of your programs and say, which ones are effective? You know, you've been offering certain things, are they effective? Well, if they are, great, let's do something on them, but if they're not, you have to take that hard, that other look and says, you know, maybe we stop doing that, okay? You know, recognizing that you have, you know, two towns that host those, host your buildings, and that those buildings are used in off-hours, making sure that the community benefits from that, and if you need to fund janitors or do anything along those lines, that you do it in a creative way, so the community continues to benefit and sees the benefits of having those facilities resident in their towns. So, you know, I, from where I sit, I think that's probably the most important thing, to continue a proper analysis of the situation, to look at it and say, okay, I can predict five years down the line, barring any, you know, major economic shifts or, you know, sudden influx, that I can be here. You know, I know what my enrollment numbers are, okay, so I can plan accordingly. And I think that that's what we're looking for, because right now, particularly over the last few years, it's been, everybody's flying by the seat of their pants, and I think that's probably a great analogy that I think that we're all frustrated with.
You know, George, right?
Yes.
Okay, good. I've heard that frustration, and it was interesting, even before I took the position, you can tell where the issues were, you know, by the kinds of questions I was asked, even in the interview process. Clearly, budget was an issue, clearly concerns around special education programming was an issue, and this ownership of the budget and the responsibilities that go along with it. And I think that, as I said, it was made clear to me, and it's one that I will pledge to do my best to try to be working on, what I will tell you is that we were setting up a number of systems where there's at least communication. So, as I said, I spent almost two hours today with the other three superintendents, and part of that time was spent planning a full day that we'll be spending together with our special education teams. Okay, so we'll be, they had already set up a mechanism last year where they began to look at the special education systems from pre-K to 12, but this was taking this to year two, and what will that look like, and the communication that goes along with that. As you may be aware, we have a new special education director in KP this year as well. The former one retired, and we hired somebody new who came in this year. She spent a good portion of yesterday morning with the three other special education directors. There's a good deal of conversation going on now, and will continue throughout the year, so that those kinds of discussions are carried forward, and that the services are appropriately provided, and that there's... are appropriately provided, and that there's as much knowledge as we possibly can about that. I will tell you that when you're dealing with students, there are always surprises. And as much as, as we wish that they weren't, there are surprises. As a former special education director, I did that for 12 years, every year, usually a move-in, that you couldn't predict, had no way of knowing, and had a significant impact. In good times, we used to budget years ago when I started in that role for the TBA, the to be announced, the to be, or TBD, to be determined. And you'd had a slot or some money set aside for that emergency that you, or that surprise that you knew was going to come. And if it didn't come, fantastic, because you always knew that you needed to increase your technology, and you knew that you needed new French books, but you're putting them off for another year, so you could use them someplace else. In difficult times, you can't budget for the to be determined. You create a very tight budget that you do your best to adhere to, and you keep your fingers crossed that that emergency doesn't happen. And if it does, you try your best to manage it internally, and if not, you have, sometimes have to go back to the community. Not would I have been fortunate in my career, I've never had to go back to the community, but we came close two years ago in my role, came close with a major surprise. So you do the best you can with that. But as I said, we've already begun to put those kinds of things in place so that the communication is more fluid and that we're clear about that. And I, that's all I can, you know, that's the best I can tell you at this point, but it is something that we're very, very aware of, and we're really keeping an eye on.
I might have a little insight to that. Prior to about three or four years ago, we had a bylaw with the three towns and the school district that said, you had to submit your budget, your, the school committee approved budget to us by the end of February, I think it was. And we always were getting this budget, that was a big number. It was eight to 10% growth for the school, for the school itself, which meant a 12 to 20% increase to the towns, depending on the assessment. So about three or four years ago, we all agreed to move that date back into March, so that would give you more time to work those numbers. And I think what happened was, and I was a big advocate for that, but I still, looking back on that now, that may have been a mistake, because what it did was, gave us less time between the time when we get your budget and when we have to vote on it. And that's what happened two years ago. We got a budget that was 12% above the previous year for KP, and in the 20s for some of the towns to do that. So now we have six weeks between when we get that budget and when Norfolk gets the first one to vote on that. And we spent the whole six weeks, we collectively, both the schools and the towns, it's not about prioritizing things and thinking, okay, how do you redo that budget? It's about how do you cut that $1.5 million out? And so now you're making cuts, just based on making a fit and not making it based on what's really the real priorities and what really should be in the budget to begin with. I think if we do the schedule that I spoke of earlier, especially if we do this, that third meeting, prior to the public hearing, where we have like an 85% view of what the budget is, and we can make those kind of tweaks to it then, and what happened last year was, the budget that came to us was a 5% budget. So it was so much closer than it had ever been before. It was so much less things that you had to try and attack and figure out in six weeks' time. So if we can do that, and maybe even do that just a little bit sooner, then we're not dealing with a $1.5 million increase that we can't afford. We give ourselves more time, you know, I assume you're starting your budget, if not already, then probably very, very soon.
Very, very soon.
And so you want 80% of your time to be spent on 80% of the solutions, not 80% of the time spent on the 20% of the solutions, is what happened two years ago.
So I will tell you that this is a new process for me here, but it's not a new budget, it's not a new process. So what I can share with you is how I've managed the budget in my former district as a superintendent. Now, again, I'll have many more meetings with Larry, because of the regional piece of it, there are different timelines and pieces. But the budget process is pretty much standard, no matter where you go. And the first piece of that is to look at all of your departments, to put their budgets together. I mean, very similar to what you do at the selectmen's level, right? Your police, everyone puts their budget together, and then you look at what all the requests are, and then you look at what you have for income, and then you go back and you try to juggle accordingly. It's been my experience that whenever I've said to each department, whether it's the principals, the special education director, the grounds, every department comes back and they put down not only what they need for next year, but also their wish list of how to move the district along. And when you put something like that together, you tend to have a budget that, even without surprises, can be 10%, 12% higher than the year before, which realistically is not a budget we can come in with. So you sit down as an administrative team, you sit down from all the different departments, and you look at this and you say, well, this has not only what we need, but it also has what we want. So let's then look at these priorities, and we're going to look at it from two ways. One, what are some of the things that we would like, because we know that this is what would be good for the students, but they're not the top priority? They can be put to the side. It's good to put those on the original list, because if we're never talking about them, then all of a sudden, you know, people don't think that you're thinking along those lines, or that they've never heard of them, and all of a sudden, you try to really push hard three years from now, and they say, this comes out of the blue. No, we've been talking about these needs for three or four years, we've just recognized that the budget can't support them, and so we put them on the back burner, but now it's time to move it to the front burner. So it's important to have those conversations, even when you recognize that you may not be able to fund everything. Then you kind of pare that down to your priorities, and you look at what you need for level service, and then you look at what you need to also enhance. And you come in with what you hope is something realistic. At the same time, you're prioritizing what those important areas of growth are, you're also looking at your budget, to come back to what you said earlier, sir, in, what did we have before in our budget that we don't necessarily need now, or we can adjust in a different way? To try to give an example, I might be looking at textbooks. Maybe five years ago, when we were doing a textbook rotation, we bought hard copies for everybody at $75 a book, but we needed, you know, 100 books for this particular class. Well, now, because of technology and online licenses, we're going to have a few books in class, because we recognize for some of our students, technology is difficult to use and read. But we can get 100 licenses, and it's going to be a third of the cost of what it was for these textbooks. Well, we budgeted for textbooks in the past, so I can trim back the textbook line item, but I'm going to need additional funds over here, because we're looking at the number of kids who are interested in taking these math electives and the new AP program, and we're going to need one more teacher to support that. And so you play, let's make a deal moving some of those funds around to try to make sure that you ensure all of that. And then you come back to the town, and you say, this is what we think is a reasonable budget that not only provides us level service, but allows us to take your district a little further along, to make it go from great to greater, from good to great kinds of things. And we share that with you. And then you come back and you tell us what you can support, and we work together on that piece of it. So that's the way I've always built a budget. I hope that makes sense, I hope that's the way.
Well, it does, but that's not how it's always happened. The more analytics.
And again, I'm not the way, I'm new.
I understand, so I'm trying to explain why we've had some frustrations. The more analytics that you guys can do upfront to get us closer to what you know is a number that we can, we can work with, is better for everything.
Exactly.
When the number, when the, when the budget's put together, it's like, okay, we have to put all this stuff in it, and we just throw it over the fence and see what happens, that doesn't work.
That's exactly right. I mean, if you're a homeowner, and you know that your roof is going to be going in a couple of years, and you start to plan for that, you put a little bit of money aside, when it finally, the shingles finally blow off, you've got the money in the bank, or at least close to the amount, to cover the roof costs. When you didn't expect it, and out of the blue, the roof blows off, and you've got to call a contractor, then you're scrambling to find the money. And there goes the Disney trip this year, sorry, kids, I know we promised it, but we can't go. We don't want the sorry kids. We want to be planning proactively.
Well, and I think what works really well is, if you've done that, and then you have another $150,000, $250,000 that you need, that's above that, that you know you probably can't get in the budget this year, but you certainly bring that to our attention.
Exactly.
Certainly make us aware of that. I do agree that you have to hear things two and three and four times before it becomes important. And so those parts of it still should happen. We do that, at least I know we do at Rantham, we probably do at other towns, is the departments have an opportunity to come in and say, okay, here's my budget, the town minister says you have a 3% increase, that's it. And the town, and the budget, the department can come in with that 3%, but say, you know, if I had an extra $50,000, I could do this. And if I had an extra $100,000, I could do that. And if we know it that way instead, then it becomes more like, well, we do find other money, if we find other money from whatever revenue sources that might be better than we thought, we can attack those things, as opposed to cutting things, because we started high and had to go lower.
Paul and I had a chance to spend some time together last week, and I thank you again for taking the time. I think he's got a good understanding of the issues we had. I know we talked about them pretty directly, we've shared those feelings.
Heard it from the town administrator.
I think that that message has been drilled in pretty clearly. But I think last year was a marked improvement, and I think we all agree with that. And I think the process we set up was a healthy process, and we'll be glad to host it and continue that process this year. I think that was a good process. The one thing I would like us to think about is, last year, we approached this as a percent of our allocation, as opposed to a percent of budget. That's a very difficult target for us to work with. Rantham, two years ago, got nailed. Last year, Norfolk got nailed. Plainville, you're probably online this year, who knows? I mean, if anyone can, I don't know who figures out this formula, but I think he's locked in a vault somewhere in Boston. I would ask that we, I would suggest that as we work through this process, that we look at this as a collective budget. And when we look at a percentage of increase, because we really have no idea how that formula is going to shake out, and to predetermine this based on allocations, like if we go in and say, well, we only wanted 3% of our allocation last year, that handicaps you. If we had stayed at 3.5% for every town last year, you would have had about a 1.2% budget increase, which doesn't work. It just doesn't work. So philosophically, I would like us to think of this in terms of the collective budget, and I understand it's a crapshoot, we all know that.
So here's my opening, right? The main reason that happens is because of how the MLC formula changes every year. And I don't know anybody that can figure out why that happens that way. Now, I'm certainly far from being the expert, but in the little bit of reading I've done, there is an alternative assessment process that takes MLC out of that process. Instead, when you do your numbers at the top of the assessment sheet, and you get down to the number to fund, the first thing that happens is that MLC formula kicks in. And last year, you got hit with it pretty bad, I think Plainville got hit with it pretty bad. For us, it was no movement at all, in fact, but the year before.
You got a rebate check, didn't you?
Yeah, almost. The year before that, though, we got hit really hard. Now, the MLC is in there, particularly for regional school districts, so if you have two or three towns in a district, and there's a big disparity between the prosperity of those two towns, it evens that out. Now, in our three towns, I don't think I'd say there's a big, a whole big disparity. What I would suggest is that if we went to the alternative assessment method, which does away with MLC, and we just get down, and if the number to fund is $25 million, and that $25 million is split based on a population of students in each of those three towns, we would do away with all that up and down spikes that happens every year. Now, over any particular year, that may mean like, so if we'd done that last year, you guys would have paid less, we would have paid a whole lot more. But the year before, it was us doing that. And I think that this is the right time to at least look at that alternative, do some memory crunching, maybe put together a small little committee that says, okay, if we do this, it's not an easy process from understanding, something has to be approved every single year, I think.
Jerry, we ran those numbers, we played with that last year, and we went back and ran those numbers based on percent of population, which when I was on the school committee back in the 80s and 90s, that's the way it was. And so you're right, it was totally predictable. We share that same feeling, that we know in advance pretty much what that number is going to be. The problem is, is because it's been in place for so long, and there is a distinct disparity between the towns in terms of how the state may view it, Plainville last year would have had to spend an additional $500,000 had we had that formula in place. And we even played with ways that we could maybe incrementally implement it, and we couldn't come up with anything that was relatively fair. That, now, we could try it again, because, believe me, I agree with you, I support the concept, but we do have neighbors, and we would have benefited from that, you would have paid more, but these folks would have been killed if we had gone to that percentage formula. Because it has traditionally, while you've had years where you've been hit, it has favored you. And I don't say that any other way than just factually. And to me, it's unfair to try and undo that and have you take what would be a significant hit. And I suspect if we did those numbers on this year's, this upcoming budget, it would reflect the same type of relationship. It not only, it was a half a million over what you already had, and you had a big chunk to begin with. So that's the problem with it. We're almost too far into the process, and there's too much distinction between the towns, whether it be right or wrong, that it makes it very difficult to get there. Because we tried that.
To do away with the MLC, and just to do away with MLC?
We looked, we looked at the straight percentage of population relationship and what it would do to the budgets. And we went back and we did that analysis, and yeah, it's by far logically a more favorable way in terms of forecasting your costs. You can hit it almost on the money. You can take 3% of your budget, or 4%, whatever number you want, increase last year's budget, take the number of students, we know how many kids we got, there's your budget. Simple process, but it kills you guys.
Jim, I'm sorry, just to keep things clear in my own head, when you say population, you're talking about the student population.
Student population, right, not, yeah. The two factors that are in there are real estate values and per capita income that influence this formula. And I don't know whether they're right or wrong, and I can't find anyone that understands how to calculate it. But somebody does, because we get numbers every year. Those numbers last year would have added, it was a little under $500,000, if I remember the exact number, on top of what you already had to pay, had we converted to that formula. And that's unrealistic. We can't do it. So then we thought, well, can we phase it in? You know, and I don't know how we do that, Jerry, because I don't know if there was any way the state would allow us to do that. But we looked at this all kinds of creative ways, because I share your feeling, couldn't come up with an answer that didn't hurt Plainville.
I think it's worth looking at, if only in the scope of what, not what happens in one particular year, but what happens over the course of five or six or seven years.
That we did.
But I think that things would balance out over the course of five or six or 10 years. Maybe one more, in a particular year, any one of them may be paying more than what we would if we had the MLC in place, but without that.
I remember, I think it was about a five-year break. In other words, you would have been significantly higher proportionately over a period of five years. And you're right, over time, it would all even out and would be down into a more fair process. The problem is, is that how do you, that's why we tried to incrementally see how we could phase it in. The problem is, is the first two, three, four years, if we use that formula, you guys are going to get nailed.
The other thing is, I believe that some of the state funding that comes back to us is factored.
It does.
Using that same MLC comparison. So even though we're being helped on the one hand, by keeping our rate lower, the state's kicking more money into the district because of that factor. So if we wipe that out, we've got to take a look at how that affects state funding, too.
We could look at it again and see if there's a way to do it, but I don't want to, I don't want to create, I don't think it was fair to do something, why we dropped the issue.
And my thinking is, probably not something we could do for this coming year, because it takes a little time to go through those kind of analytics and to get the information, and then to look at stuff. But I think it's worthwhile to, if we're going to do it, at least look at it. We should start now in preparation of 2021.
Well, I don't think it's, I don't think it's all feasible, oh, for 2021?
Right.
Well, I guess that's feasible. Certainly, we can't do it for this coming budget process.
No, yeah.
We can look at, we can share, do we still have them? Probably hidden in a file somewhere? We can share the calculations we did on using that formula with you guys, and you can see how it worked out.
But, you know, when we look at that, the problem I see with it is, it's sort of, it pins three towns against each other. And I remember one conversation we had, and I think it was probably five years ago, when we were getting hit hard, it was, you made the comment, we're setting the bar, now you got to meet it. And it shouldn't be that way. The three towns, and we kind of, after that, got together with Plainville and said, you know, your town meeting was close to ours, what can we do and work collectively to try to get this number, to get it? You know, I had conversations with Kevin during the budget, saying, you know, this is all we have to pay, we can afford more, why don't we vote a higher number and let them two fight it out? You know, we've always been the one being, and I'm like, no. So I think the perfect way to do this is to, it's kind of a two-fold, is to figure your assessment the way by, based on population, factor that in, and then when your assessment comes out, and if you're saving $300,000, you put that in your stabilization for that year that's bad, and that's how you fund it. You can do it internally and work the system, but what we need to do is not pin the three towns against each other, because it's a two-town vote, we have to have the conversation on what we want to do collectively before. Because that's the problem I have, and, am I right, Kevin?
Yeah.[1759.78]
I was like, "Let's, let's go for it. Let's, you know, you had your money set aside. You did the smart thing, because you had a good year the year before. You put in your stabilization." I said, "We can really hang them this year." I said, "But we don't. We don't want to do that. That's not the way I am." But we need to have these talks. We know, Jerry, when he was on the finance committee, went over and talked to the Plainville Finance Committee, and we had some great conversations with them, brought them in, and it helped. But it shouldn't be Rentham, Plainville against Norfolk. Once again, it's not us and them. It's all of us, and we should be having this conversation.
We appreciate that.
It shouldn't be that way, and I hate it.
And I don't think it was last year, Joe. I think we had, we had a very collaborative process last year.
It was last year. And like I said, we could have funded KP at a higher rate. We were going to lose nothing. You know, we could have went in when we had our assessment. We wouldn't have lost a penny. We would have had more money in free cash. It all would have happened at the end of the year, but we didn't do it. And it's because, you know, we're not going to do it at the Plainville. We know the struggles we're all going through. The struggles aren't just at KP. We're all having the struggles with public safety, with DPW, getting our streets done. We have those same struggles. And instead of us sitting there and going, we should all be sitting there saying, "How can we do not just KP, but everything together?" Because we're all having the same conversations at our meeting. We're all having the same struggles.
Which is why I'm suggesting we look at this as a percent of the budget, as opposed to a percent of the allocation. Because I think that's a fairer way for KP to look at this. Because we don't know how, unfortunately, we don't know how that allocation is going to work out. You know, we don't know whether it's our turn on the hit board, or you get the short straw, or they get the short straw. We have no way of knowing that. But if we look at this sort of holistically and say, you know, we can support, and I'm picking a number arbitrarily, we can support a 3% increase to their budget, arbitrary number, and we look at that, I think that, I would like us to see, or at least consider, as opposed to looking at this as an allocation, to look at that as it relates to. For example, if you're looking at 3% of your allocation from last year, you know, a cup of coffee and a couple of donuts at Dunkin' Donuts, and we're good to go. We need to look at this as a total budget. And having talked with Paul extensively last week, I think his comments, and he said the same thing to me last week, that pulling, I don't want to say that we haven't had the chance to pull the covers back, but I think we're going to get a better understanding of how those dollars are spent. And we made a lot of progress last year. I mean, while the bad years were there beforehand, and I've been fussing with this budget for 14 years now, and last year was the best year I ever had. You know, it was a very good, good year in trying to work through the considerations of KP, and it made it much easier to understand and support. I think this year will even be better.
You know, and going back to what you were saying about, you know, cutting down on buying textbooks and going to technology, that message has to get out, because nobody understands. Nobody understands what's going on. They, you have to, we, you know, we haven't been in a classroom, for me, 35 years since I've been in a classroom. Things have changed. So, you know, when you have these things where, you know, every year we spend X amount of dollars on supplies, well, those supply numbers are going down because technology is increased. We need to understand that.
Exactly.
You don't put the 3% on the supplies every year and put that as a little, you know, crazy money for the side. We need to understand what's your, you know, what's, your expenses are going down on textbooks, who's going here, and how we're saving money. Because I think if everyone, and like you said, the wish list, I would love to see the wish list and the return on the investment. If we did X, what would it do for our students? And we may sit there and say, "We're going to fight to find this money."
And I mean, the other thing they have to remember is that there's, when I look at a budget from an education perspective, about 85% of my budget is fixed. It's salaries, it's utilities, it's those kinds of costs that really become very difficult for me to cut into. My discretionary budget's only about 15%. It's your supplies, your paper goods, your books, your technology, things like that. So when we don't get the budget that we need to level service, we try to go to that 15% first. So again, you may not notice that we don't have the number of books or whatever. We talk about that 85%. That's the teaching piece of it. But we do everything we possibly can to make sure that those people are still in the classroom. But we don't have a lot of wiggle room with that piece of it, and it's not always clearly seen by the public. So yes, I'm very happy to have as many conversations with the public as possible. We're doing our best, and again, I've only been here a couple of months, but we're really working to start to try to push the stories out, all kinds of stories about KP. I want everyone to be talking about the world-class education, but I want people to be knowing about the good things that are going on. And when there's something that you need to know that isn't as positive, we need to push that story out, too, but we need to do it in a way that is clear and helps to reassure people that we're managing the situation appropriately. And so the message needs to be one consistent one. Messaging is going to be one of my biggest projects this year. I can't guarantee we're always going to get it right, even though I'm saying it publicly. There may be a time when we don't do the best job messaging, but we are working on ways of doing that. And I'm looking for as many venues as possible to tell the story. So if it means coming to each of your select board meetings and talking about, "What does the budget look like from a real basic, you know, these are the kinds of things that we purchase with this. These are the, there are things that are cut." Now, I'll give you the example. That 15% technology gets cut every year. And one of the ways that I can tell you, you are significantly, in my opinion, lagging behind some of your other school districts in the area, is around technology. You know, your technology changes so quickly, laptops, desktops. We don't have the kind of technology devices in the classroom that many other school systems have. And we hold off another year. Okay, well, we want to keep that teacher in the classroom to keep those class-sized numbers down. All right, well, we would have liked to have purchased 300 computers, which sounds like a lot, but when you think of the number of students you have in the district, isn't so much at all. But we're only going to purchase 50 this year because we need the extra money to cover the salary. And so again, the kids have math, the kids have English, parents don't see it, but it's another year where our technology department is running around and they're duct taping, you know, cables together, and we're still using desktops rather than the, you know, the laptops that kids should be working on in their desks. It definitely is an area that we have to be looking at. So again, having those kinds of conversations for people to see. We'll open the buildings up as often as people want to come in. If you want to hold your meetings at the buildings, "Plainville, you don't have a building in town."
We will soon.
I want to find as many ways for Plainville to feel like they have, you know, that KP is their school's.
Oh, we don't have a KP building. I thought you were talking about our town hall.
I'm sorry. And I was kind of glossing by, because I wasn't quite sure if there was something I was missing and I needed to, I've been here two months.
We don't have like a meeting room in our town.
No one told me I was building another school in this process. That's a big project.
I thought you were talking about like a public meeting space.
But I mean, is, we don't have, you don't have that school to go to. The more meetings you can hold in our buildings, the more times we can open that building up for you, so that people in Plainville walk into that school feeling, feeling like, "This is my school." It's not about where the property line ends. It's not about that entering, you know, sign that we drive by. It's about, "This is my school. This is where my neighbors' kids, this is where my kids, my niece and nephew went to middle school and to high school." Then everyone feels that pride and ownership. And so any way you can think of for us to open that up to your community, and I think that was something, George, you also said earlier, about making sure that we find creative ways of keeping those doors open. Absolutely is what we want to do.
Just focus back on Jerry's comments a couple minutes ago for one second. Well, I agree with Jim. We worked on that, and I think there's no easy solution. For the long-term betterment of the district and the sanity of the town administrators, I would encourage us to get, to try and somehow transition to that other formula, because I think, you know, even though it may hurt Plainville in the short term, it's going to help all of us in the long term when we have more predictable budgets. You know, I look at bigger towns, you know, and they carve out their budget, you know, they look at their revenues, they take 65% of it or 70% of it and give it to the schools, and then they can focus on the rest of the municipality. And we can't do that. You know, we do that, and then we just rip it all up, and then we start over again, and if we can get to a predictable budget process, we'll all be better off in the long term. And to Jim's, you know, Jim's right. It's not, it's not going to happen in a year or three, but maybe it's a 15-year transition or a 20-year transition, but we need to get there eventually.
Look left of the state's devices, we all know that, you know, they'll come up with a formula that somebody's figured out in the back room someplace. But, you know, unless you're issuing secret decoder rings, we're out of luck.
Well, I will say Larry understood, Larry's description of it last year was the best one that I've ever heard, and so he clearly understands it better than I do. We'll leave it at that. So he can help solve that problem, I think, because he comes from Dennis Yarmuth as well. So it's, he's been dealing with us a long time.
Exactly.
So why don't we make a point, then? We're going to, I think we're going to agree. We haven't said a date. We're going to come back in October, look at the towns, do our initial meeting.
We'll be glad to host it.
And kind of look at some of the things we've already done with that. I'll do a little more reading, if anybody else certainly wants to do something, and let's make that a topic of conversation about what we would need to go forward from there if we wanted to see what that meant. Because again, I know we can't, it's impossible to do it in the coming fiscal year. The very least it would be-
Who will come from your board, Jerry? Will it be you again?
I guess we'll talk about it, but-
You know, I'd like to open it to whoever wants to come. You know, I think it's, you know, if two members want to go, I think it's to limit it to one. If there's some great things, I'd like to share with everybody.
Well, I just think it's helpful not to have it a quorum, so it doesn't have to be a posted meeting. Now, you can bring two. I can't.
Okay, we, so.
No, you designate one, and then if somebody shows up, it's a casual encounter, and they just don't speak with it.
Well, we're going to, we're going to stick to the rules on that one.
If we could host at any point, we would be very, very happy to have as many of the meetings as possible in our buildings.
But we can rotate them around. Last year, Jerry was kind of-
Again, that idea, they're your buildings. They're your schools, and any way we can make sure that the doors are open for all of you to use them, we'd like to do that.
So we'll pick a date where we can all get together in October?
I'll do what I did last year. I'll send out an email, I'll pick a couple of dates, and get ready to say, "Okay, what works for a good thing," and we'll set it up that way.
Okay, deal.
We'll shoot for something in middle October.
Work for you guys?
Jim, if I could, just in the spirit of budgets and where things are at, just obviously we're here talking about King Philip and, you know, the, we discussed a little bit of our own local districts, but the other thing to keep in mind is the tri-county vocational school system is another nugget that had a considerable increase, you know, percentage-wise, considerable budget increase, at least for us. And they're also looking at, you know, up against a 40-year school, you know, $58 million in capital needs, you know, some of which are, you know, imminent needs. So just kind of keeping that, as we look at education sort of as a whole, and, you know, the community funding of education, to, you know, to Jack's point, that, you know, looking at the benefit that other town administrators have, to be able to just kind of do that 60-40 town-school agreement, where if the revenue goes up or goes down, then it's adjusted and balanced. It's a difficult juggle between all of those. And again, you know, the formula base for that is directly pupil-driven, you know, every year, so.
Tri-county's been creeping up.
It has been creeping up, yeah.
I think last year it went down a tad for us.
We've lost some population.
We went down, but-
It was went up considerably, considerably.
Seventeen towns, seven, seventeen towns, isn't it?
But I think just to kind of throw it out there, is not so much the assessment, is really just the big nugget that's coming down. They didn't do it, which, they had a meeting in February, which they were going to be looking to move forward with an actual vote and election, but it's coming. You know, their capital request needs, and, you know, the longer that gets pushed out, that dollar, you know, that dollar creeps up. So they're about $60 million as of last year, and some of which were fairly imminent. So just keep that, you know, as our towns, we look at the total cost of education.
Because they've been such a small number, they're somewhat out of sight, out of mind, but your points we'll take. Comment, any other comments, thoughts? All right, good start.
Well, I guess I just would, in closing, want to say, you know, thank you for taking some time to talk with me, but also to find out, you know, not necessarily in tonight's venue, but at any point, if there are concerns you have, if there are things that you'd like us to be looking at as a school community, I absolutely want to hear them. We're going to be looking at a much more involved strategic plan in the spring to next summer. Coming on board, the last strategic plan was from 2014, but I didn't feel comfortable doing a strategic plan over the summer, having been here only a month or two. We had a fantastic group of community members who did some great research and got us some wonderful data that served us well to create a one-year plan for this year and will help bring us into, you know, that next go-round. But I want to hear from all of the stakeholders regarding what your concerns are, what your needs are, as we build that three-to-five-year plan. And then when we have that plan, that's going to drive the budget as well. And so when we have those school budget presentations, you're going to hear about the plan and what that, you know, the trajectory is, whether it's around technology, and why the budget is needed to support the strategic plan. So we should all tie together.
Well, is there any open CBAs this year? Collective bargaining?
Every year.
Rotation?
Yes. Yes. We just, the-
Teachers closed last year.
The teachers just closed, yes. They ratified, and with the school committee on Monday night will vote, and that will be all set.
You got the language all worked out?
Yes. Very, very pleased with that.
Hold on.
So that's done. So that was very good news. But I think, oh, gosh, I think it's teacher assistance that is this year. I'm almost positive it's teacher assistance that are 19. In fact, I am positive. It's, yeah. But yes, there's constantly one up for, yeah.
Yeah, again, that's a balancing, not to keep beating a dead horse on the teamwork and, you know, a partnership, if you will, but, you know, the resentment that comes from the towns and the other town departments are a lot at looking at KP, you know, effectively, you know, they want, they voted this, and this guy requires us to cut out X, and you're no longer getting two police cruisers. You know, there's those things, but there's also the animosity of, you know, trying to balance attracting and maintaining excellent teachers with the benefits that are provided. And, you know, we're constantly hearing on our side about the rich benefits that KP offers, particularly around the health insurance. You know, so I'd just like to hear kind of if, you know, your thoughts if, I mean, I know there's collective bargaining things there, but at least if administration is thinking about those, to come up with a way of, you know, we're constantly talking about health insurance, and, you know, that's a significant driver for every municipality. But, you know, I feel like even in my short time, this has been discussed, but, you know, when is action actually, you know, is it on the horizon? Are they looking at offering, you know, any new, any new teacher or staff hired after X date, just getting us towards, you know, something that's a little more palatable with those type of things, equivalent to our three community offerings as well?
So I will tell you that this is a bone of contention that I've discovered, and so things are not, you know, there are some issues here. But there are two ways of looking at, you know, the health insurance piece of it. There is the percentage that we pay and they pay for the health insurance plan, but there's also the cost of the plan itself. And I will say that over the last couple of years, KP, when looking at funding issues, came back and readjusted the plans that were offered. So the percentage is negotiated, the plans that are offered, you know, that's a shopping piece, but if, but then there's agreements that have to go along with the bargaining units as well. But they did make a change to the plan that was offered in an effort to reduce the burden on the budget.
That's okay.
So, yeah, yeah. So like I said, there, but, you know, there's some issues there, but as I said, that was done. So that was prior to me, but I will say that when the budgets are tough, those are the kinds of things that don't necessarily get seen by the community, but those are the kinds of things that you go back to the drawing board and you go, "Okay, look, you know, we were hoping that people would realize that, you know, math is important, but we can't do this. How can, how can we, you know, save this situation?" And so they've tried to get creative, and that was one of the ways that it was done. Thank you.
Other comments, gosh, ladies?
One thing I actually want to say, I'm glad to see that we have KP parents in the audience. I was hopeful when I saw some of your non-KP parents in the audience that they were coming. You need to sell KP to the non-KP parents.
You are absolutely right.
And that's, I think, a big problem. And I know at one time we encouraged, they used to drop off tickets to different events at the school to get seniors to come. And they would, but I think there were so many different venues of entertainment between the band, the theater, that the seniors would enjoy that. If we could incorporate and make them part of the KP family, and I think that's the missing piece, because it goes back to, "I have no kids in the school system. Why should I support it?" Well, this is why.
Some people have heard me talk about that, and actually, I think, Jim, you and I may have even, in our conversation, may have gone down that road a little bit, but I couldn't agree with you more. I think that people need to put a face to the school, and it's not me. It's the kids. And, you know, we do that differently depending on our surroundings and where we are. I've just begun to look at that piece of it. I had conversations, I met with the music department a couple of weeks ago. We were talking about that very same issue. I will tell you, in my previous district, the nice thing was that the Council on Aging was within walking distance of the school. was in, within walking distance of the school. And so like you have the Leo, the Leo Club here, which is part of the Lions, in Avon, where I was previously, we had the Interact Club, which was the high school version of Rotary, which is Service Above Self. And so that group would walk over on every half-day over to the Council on Aging. And one of the things that they did was something very simple, they did it, they offered tutoring to the elders around the devices. You want to be able to Skype your grandchild in, you know, Florida, we're going to teach you how to do that. And, you know, they worked, they had the, the seniors bring their own devices. They also devoted two days a year where they went out and they did yacht cleanup for anyone who couldn't do that themselves any longer, and they got those names from the Council on Aging, and then they went out and they did that kind of work. So there are lots of ways for the community, for our students to interact with the community, from bringing our, our seniors in during the day for a dress rehearsal, if they might